Hi, good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise and salute to the flag. A flagrant is to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, united. All right, statement of adequate notice.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting provided as follows: On January 7th, 2019, notice was sent to the Home Minister, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Local.
Mr. Gargano?
Here.
Ms. Gilliam?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maganello?
Here.
Mr. Shahada?
Here.
Ms. Beviana?
Present.
Ms. Birch?
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes.
I move items 1 and 2. Mr. Gargano?
Yes to 2, abstain from 1.
Ms. Gillian?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Ms. Beviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
All right, any comments from the public? Any short comments regarding the agenda tonight? Please step up, and if you have any questions, please state your name and your address, and any short questions you may have pertaining to the agenda. I presume none. A big front? Oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to acknowledge our brand-new Class 3 officer who just walked into the room, Officer T. Hattman. Good night, Officer Hattman. I also, I think I saw our mayor walking. Mayor Arson, how are you, sir? I think I saw our retired board president, Mr. Tapaleski. He couldn't get enough. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the new year and our first official board meeting. I'd like to start by giving our monthly HIV report, Mr. President. This month, there were nine incidents reported. None of those were validated as being HIV incidents. Two were deemed not to be, and seven were undetermined. The actions taken included counseling, parent meetings, and monitoring, and in all instances, the victims were counseled. If you have not done so, please take a look at my full superintendent's report. There are copies up here on the stage. I think we have a nice young man down there, Mr. Shahada. If anybody raises their hand and would like a copy of this report, would you hand it out? Please raise your hand if you need a copy of the superintendent's report. It's really good reading. Really good reading. This young man will be happy to deliver it. Tonight, as part of my report, we are going to recognize some outstanding students from Linden High School and one of our most amazing teachers, Mrs. Monica Gonzalez. This class and these students were TV stars. They were selected to be a part of Classroom Close-Up, New Jersey. As part of Mrs. Gonzalez's class, they were working on a civil rights graphic novel. And these students who are in Mrs. Gonzalez's US-2 class spent time exploring, understanding, and investigating civil rights history. They were asked, tasked, to create original graphic novels in creative teams. Students then wrote and illustrated their own books that explored various civil rights issues from the 1800s to the present day, including, but not limited to, Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, The Freedom Riders, The Riots of 1960, Selma, Brown versus the Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, the Jim Crow laws, and the March on Washington. So, we're going to show you a video. I'd ask the board members at this time to step down from the stage and sit in the front row. At the conclusion of the video, we'll recognize the teachers and their students.
It's about this boy named Daniel, and he's living in the 1960s as a head of the civil rights movement, and he becomes a black man there. And it's about his life and what his family thinks of him, what happens.
We kind of had, like, before we started drawing and everything, what we decided to do was basically we had like the hellos. So, we basically had Malcolm X and his entire life, everything about it. As you can see, some of these are like flashbacks of him in prison, because he went to prison. We took his involvement with the Nation of Islam, his departure, and even his pilgrimage to Mecca.
I enjoy seeing students grow as they go through this project. It's amazing how they start off the first day I introduce this lesson worried about, "I can't draw," to then, "My goodness, I didn't know anything about this. I thought I knew Malcolm X, but I had no idea that he went through this as a young man." And I don't know if they understand when these first start how big this project's going to be for them, but in the end, just watching them grow through the process, understanding it, learning it, owning the information is very important. What we're going to do today is we're going to start our graphic novels. All right? So, what I've done is I've put a couple of things together for us to take a look at. So, I'm requiring them to draw, I'm requiring them to research, and I'm requiring them to put a script together and develop an idea. These are the graphic novels that other students put together last year. And this is what you're going to be focusing on as well.
I was excited about it because I love art and drawing. So, when I heard we were doing a comic book, it was just combining everything that I liked.
What I noticed a number of years ago was that students were reading graphic novels more than they were reading our traditional novels. So, the idea behind the project was that students would be able to take an event and translate it into some sort of graphics. We're going to connect what we learned with the US-1 class to the US-2 class and make sure we follow civil rights through all of history. So, we're going to talk about different topics. So, in this one, I think it's most powerful because they're making it their own. They're creating a story. And as teachers, as educators, we know that the best way to learn something is to actually have to teach it to somebody else.
We had four different topics, so we decided to kind of tie them together by making it seem like it was a grandmother telling her grandson the story for his school report. And she talks about the Little Rock Nine and why schools were segregated in protest to end segregation. And because we based it on her telling the story, we were able to make the story just one big story that continued on to the end.
It was definitely difficult because we wanted to make something real. We wanted to have a situation where there was a kid during the civil rights movement and the struggles that a teen and like adults would go through during that time.
You get more, like, sucked into it in a sense because you have to think about it and you have to get involved in it. I don't do it like that.
It allowed me to embrace my creative side, which I think helped me understand the material more because I was not only researching it, but then I also had to come up with dialogue to match it and then draw it myself, so help me remember it.
So, today is the day where everything gets on display. So, we've worked hard to put these together. We've had the book digitized and bound into an actual real book with all the graphic novels. And today, the students get to show the rest of the school what they've done. So, we've gone from thinking about the story, creating the story, and now we're the last part of storytelling, telling the story.
So, if I had to choose one particular part, it would probably be this page right here just because the comic museum is what ties on the whole story together because we have the MLK Saturation and the Poor People's Campaign, and then the Civil Rights Act of the 1968.
It feels really cool, especially when people see yours and they react in such a positive way. It's like that hard work really do pay off in it. It's a good feeling that people enjoy something that you really dedicated time to.
I think it came out amazing. Everybody's comics look great. They all tell a story, but they're all so different, even though some of us do have the same topics. They're all told a different way, which I think is amazing.
It is incredible to see how much we've done and to watch my students be so proud of their work and own it.
Favorite page? Um, I love this one because it's an actual, it's like a real moment between Daniel and his father. I like that one. I think that was traveling maybe going.
I always say that, you know, this is a project that lives beyond them. When they graduate, this project will still be here. I will still be sharing it with my students in my classroom. So, today is an exclamation point on all of what we've worked hard to do.
So, those of you... Those of you who went to school when I went to school or earlier, or even a few years ago, probably learned about civil rights. The teacher stood up in front of the room and lectured. And if you were interested, and they were really outgoing, and they really got your attention, you paid attention, you learned a little. That's not really how the best teachers and the most effective teachers operate. The most effective teachers talk very little, and the students do. And when you allow that to happen, students have the ability to create something like this. And this is something that those students will never forget. They will never forget the material that they learned, and they will never forget the opportunity that their teacher gave them. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Gonzalez, who is a history teacher here at Linden High School. Say her words.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to call up the students. If you'd all come up here and join me because this is about you. It's not about me. So, if you'll come up and join me right now, I know you're out there, don't be shy. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, the students. I know Dr. Robert Tozzi mentioned about me being a great teacher, but truly, it's these great students that make me a good teacher. So, I just want to say that you guys deserve everything. And I just really thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the hard work that you guys always put in when you show up to class because it's about the students. And I can't be more proud of my students. So, thank you.
At this time, the Education Committee of the Linden Board of Education will present certificates to these students, and we will take a nice picture. Ms. Gonzalez? Yes, please. And then we have a bunch of nice certificates for the rest of the students.
So, yes, there are a lot more students involved. Unfortunately, due to weather and other commitments that they had, they couldn't be out here today. So, but these do represent a nice group of our students that we have that are absolutely amazing. So, thank you. I'm so confused. I apologize.
We didn't rehearse. We didn't rehearse. Sorry. Ms. Gonzalez, you say the name. Ms. Gillian will give out the certificate, and then we'll stand here and look pretty.
Melanie? Naomi? Sorry, guys. We had a lot of people, like I said, cancel last minute. Brooke? Brooke is here. Andre? No, not it.
It's in here. Oh, that's...
Where? Oh!
Yes, it's all in there.
Martha?
The name doesn't look right, don't worry. Congratulations. How about one more round of applause? You can take the picture from our Facebook account. Mr. Miller. All right, guys, let's do this uniform. Mr. Mitchell Gorbunov.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board, Dr. Robert Tozzi. My name is Mitch Gorbunov. I am a technology teacher at Schools 4 to 9. I'm here today with members of the School 4 community, teachers, parents, yes? Round of applause for School 4, yes? Teachers, parents, our wonderful Vice Principal, Ms. Olivero, and of course, our wonderful Student Vanguard coming up, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, we are here today to invite members of the Board to bed and our superintendent to the first-ever School 4 Film Festival. As part of our digital technology curriculum, students are learning how to create their own films using digital tools and digital media. On April 4th, from 6 to 8 at School 4, we're going to be showcasing and celebrating their work by having the School 4 community come together and watch all of the work that our filmmakers put into their film projects. And we'd like to invite all of you to be a part of that process in two ways. The first way we're going to do that is to ask you to attend the festival on April 4th, if you can. The other way we'd like to ask you to attend is to volunteer to be what we call guest judges. So, that would entail you helping us decide which film will receive which award the night of the event. All the groups will receive an award, but we're going to need a lot of help picking which film gets which award, and I know we'd really appreciate all that. So, without much further ado, there'll be more details coming forward later, but for now, let's have our Student Vanguard please hand out the invitations and your official ticket. Go ahead. You know what, there, Darrell? I'm going to give you a special job. I want you to take this ticket that I took, and I want you to give it to Mr. Arndsted, who I think is still sitting in the back over there. You still there, Mr. Arndsted? There he is. Go ahead and give that to him there, Darrell. Just bring it to me. Always bring it. Always. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. We look forward to seeing you at the first-ever School 4 Film Festival.
I was a little nervous when Mr. Gorbunov said he had a surprise announcement. I was a little worried. But thank God, these kids are so cute and adorable. We'll do whatever any of you guys want us to do, okay? We'll be there. Thank you for coming to that day. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. Okay, from the Committee of the Board, Education Committee. All right, the Attorney Committee. Ms. Kozak.
The Attorney Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items number 1 through 3, and ask for a second. Okay.
Local.
Mr. Gargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gillian?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Ms. Beviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Education Committee, Mr. Miller.
The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Numbers 1 through 34 and number 31... I'm sorry. Number 1 through 33 and 34 proclaim the month of February 2019 as Black History Month to be highlighted in the Linden Public Schools as an outline of the following revolution, Black History Month. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Local.
Mr. Gargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gillian?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Ms. Beviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Personal Affairs Committee, Ms. Kozak.
First of all, Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Dr. Robert Tozzi, would you like to address number 1?
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. We were deeply saddened to hear the passing of Joyce Pascoe, who worked for the Linden Board of Education as a language arts teacher for 43 years. Joyce spent her entire career at Soul Middle School, retiring in 2013. So, on behalf of the Linden Public School District, I'd like to offer our deepest condolences to her family. Item 2, we have several retirements on the agenda. Tonight, I'd like to say just a little bit about each one. Ms. Bernadette Patino started her career as an English teacher in 1990, I believe. Because it says 1998 in my notes, but I know that's not accurate because she was a teacher when I was here in high school. So, I'm going to go with 1989. She was a language arts teacher. Ms. Patino taught basic skills and for the last 18 years has been the international baccalaureate coordinator. Susan Eisenberg started her career in 2008 as a speech language specialist for the Linden Public Schools. She has serviced students at all of our elementary schools and Linden High School. Ms. Cravalli started her career as a resource teacher at McMathes Middle School in 2007 and has taught at Schools 5 and 9. Alan Russo came to the Linden Public Schools in 2002 after an accomplished career in Raway and St. Elizabeth Hospitals. She started as a secretary in the Special Services Department, spent a short time in the business office, and then was asked to join the office of the superintendent by then Superintendent Martino. Since 2005, she has been essential to the superintendent's office, and we will miss her dearly. And finally, Deborah Sager started her teaching career for the Linden Public Schools in 2000 as a teacher of special education. She's been teaching at Linden High School for 19 years. I would like to wish all of these employees a very happy, healthy, and long retirement. Thank you, Ms. Kozak.
Items 1 through 51, under Personnel, and ask for a second. Okay.
Local.
Mr. Gargano?
Yes to all except for number 4, Anderson Teal. We tell abstain from her.
Ms. Gillian?
Yes to all except number 4. Abstain, please, for Teal Anderson.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes to all except number 4, abstaining for Teal Anderson.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes to all with the exception of under item number 4, abstain for Teal Anderson.
Ms. Maganello?
Yes to all except for item number 4. Concur with the discussion for Mrs. Teal Anderson.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes to all.
Ms. Beviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch? Yes to all except for no on 21, 22. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes to all. Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes to all with the exception on Personnel. Number 4, I abstain on Ms. Teal.
Buildings, grounds, and Security Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. Finance.
All right, so the Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I move items 1 through 29, and ask for a second.
Second. Local.
Mr. Gargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gillian?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes to all except 21, 22, 23, and 24.
I would like, I need a clarification, please, Mr. President. This agenda is still not correct, this finance report. The Business Administrator does not have the authority to make motions. The superintendent has to recommend all these motions. Items 1 through... The only items that the superintendent cannot recommend are 21, 22, and 23. All others, I have to recommend, and I do recommend, but it needs to be noted in the minutes. I recommend all but 21, 22, and 23. I recommend all but twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Twenty-four is what?
And twenty-four, thank you.
Mrs. Viviana?
No on items twenty-one, twenty-two, abstain on twenty-three, no on twenty-four.
Mrs. Birch?
No on twenty-one, twenty-two, abstain on twenty-three, and no on twenty-four.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
All right, Buildings, grounds, and security, Ms. Johnson.
The Building, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one through twelve.
Second.
Second.
Voco.
Mr. Gargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes. Mr. President, may I say something for a moment?
I think it's personal.
Can I ask for clarification on something?
I want to clarify something.
Absolutely, what do you want? For, I'm sorry, for Personnel on number four, because of the abstentions on it and the majority remaining voted yes, how does that go? Just for clarification, everybody here? For number four, for Teal Anderson?
What you can do, ask that in public comments at the end, okay? That's the proper way to do that, okay? Thank you. Okay, Athletic Committee.
So there's no action to be taken at the Athletic Committee today, but we'll go over some things that are going on within athletics within the district. Boys varsity basketball. Boys varsity basketball team is currently in a transition year where they're in the new watch on conference where they're paired alongside the top teams within the state, if not even the country. The boys have an upcoming game this Saturday, which will result in a clear picture with where they would stand in the NJSIAA tournament. They're looking forward to a Uni County tournament that will take place in February. Boys JV basketball. The JV boys have had a great season so far, and they're above 500 right now with just like the stiff competition that varsity has been receiving. We're looking forward to them as well in the Uni County tournament taking place in February. Boys freshman basketball is doing really well. The freshman boys have gone off to phenomenal start, going undefeated so far with a tremendous amount of talent. They are very eager to see how their season finishes out. Girls basketball. Our varsity girls team's in transition year and several new coaches and staff. The girls have been played with various injuries and absences throughout their starting rotation. And then even though they haven't got up to a great start, we're expecting the starting five playing together and doing great things in the short time future. Girls JV basketball have had their up and down this season as well. They've won an amazing victory when they were throwing nine and a half against David Brerley, and they won with a three-pointer at the buzzer. None better than a buzzer beater, you know? Something else going on is girls and boys with their track. The boys and the girls with their track and field programs have gotten off to great starts. The numbers for each team have been increasing over the past couple of seasons. We have strong leaders who have really helped guide and mold our newcomers. They have many highlights so far, but more is yet to come. The girls shot put and high jump rally teams did an amazing job at the Uni County Relays. The shot put team placed second. Members of the relay team include Aleah Lewis, Faith Riddick, and Shakira Brown. Great job for them. The high jump relay team placed sixth. Members of the relay team include Jongero Zom and Aliza Lozier. The boys shot put team, which includes Kyle Linscombe, Sam A. Sanchez, and Julio Rosario, won the gold at the Uni County Relays. Congratulations to them as well. The Spirit Melody team also placed fifth in the same meet. Members of the relay team included Chris Banks, Steven Pierre, Trey Dunn, and Hunter Cromwell. On January 9th, the Ridgewood Winter Games, Kyle Linscombe had unbelievable performance in shot put. He threw a fifty-eight point six-foot shot put, which is currently the best mark in the state at the state group four relay. Kyle Linscombe was at it again. The time, this time, the team up with Sam A. Sanchez in the shot put relay. They ended up taking second place. Kyle has the best throw in the meet. Wrestling team is also having a really good season. Our team's enjoying this wonderful season gearing up for postseason district and team sectional tournaments. Alex Dorsey won the Uni County Tournament at 160 pounds, and is currently 21-1 on the season. Anybody that wrestled in the past or anything like that knows how hard and tough that is to do, just to maintain the weight and keep your eating habits right while staying in physical physique in order to do that. That is absolutely remarkable. Also, Michael Alveda is currently 20-2 this season and took second at Uni County, which is another unbelievable mark in the wrestling. Also going on in the district, the bowling team is 13-1. They recently ended a 43-game winning streak, match winning streak. Currently this year, they are 13-1. They took second place in two major tournaments this year, including today. They actually won the Uni County Tournament, which is out at Jersey Lanes, which is actually right before they started today. They got a really good team, they're doing really good this year. I do urge anybody who's available next Friday to come and give them support. They're going to be at Jersey Lanes at 2 o'clock for their state sectional tournament. Also, we have our swimming team. Our swimming team is headed in the right direction. Their swimming gets a lot of tough competition. Our swimmers are double to win the season, double their wins that they had a season ago, which is really good. So it's showing progress. Stuff that's going on in the middle school, schools girls basketball are 1-3 on the season. Soul Boys Basketball is 1-2. McManus Boys is 3-2. McManus Girls is 2-4. But as the season goes on, they'll continue to work together and do the best that they can to get some more wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Policy Committee, Ms. Maganello.
The Planning and Policy Committee submits policies for first and second readings to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies. For first reading, item 5145.7, gender identity and expression, will be revised to be consistent with current law and regulations. Item 4111.2/4211.2, domestic violence. This is a new policy that is inquired by law. And the third is 5141.21, administering medication. This is revised to add information in parent notification, training, and liability.
Technology Committee. Do you want to motion on it? I mean, a second, I'm sorry, a second.
Second.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Gargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Health and Safety Committee, Ms. Gargano.
There's currently no action at the Technology Committee, but I might go over some things that are going on within the technology. Some events that are going on, the Gardener Safe and Robotics Competition was Saturday, January 27, 2019. McManus Middle School actually came in second out of 52 teams, which is really great. They're doing really good things in the McManus Middle School with technology. Another thing that is going on on February 28th is Tech Night at School One. Invitations are coming to follow. Some current device counts within the district, there's 5,000 natural laptops, 2,000 iPads, 800 wireless access points, 700 VoIP phones, 650 display monitors, 300 PCs, 275 printers, 150 interactive panels, and 100 Apple TVs. Something else that we're talking about within the committee is possibly bringing some classes into the high school over time. We still have to talk about it a little bit more to try to branch out. Because right now, we have technology in the elementary schools and the middle schools, and it'd be great to bring that into the high school. So we're going to work together with our Director of the Technology Committee in the district and try to get some applications, some things that he's thrown out and we talked about a little bit. Nothing set in stone or anything like that, is mobile application development and computer-generated imagery and animation, some things we're thinking about. And Mr. Walters will give you some more detail with us with that at our next committee meeting. Thank you.
At this time, the state and county delegates are having meetings next month, so the state and county delegates will have your reports next month. I know the counties have one in February, we can go in there. Without that, we'll go to final comments to our board members. If anyone has anything to say, one minute and just, go ahead. Yes.
There's no time, one minute. There's no time, one minute, on board member comments.
Yeah, we'll give you about one minute, so just short comments, yeah?
I just need clarification on Personnel number four. It's six abstentions, three yeses, how does that read down?
If you wanted to ask someone about their own private vote, you could do that in private.
No, no, I'm talking about how does it go as a whole? Is it, does it pass, is it not, because majority of?
No, no, okay, I'm sorry.
Of course, I think there are policies.
No, no, an abstention vote. An abstention vote is a nothing vote. So what happened, yes, it did not pass, but it will go back to committee. That's what an abstention vote is. So that will go back to committee, and then that position, correct. And an abstention vote, and when someone abstains, an abstention vote is a nothing vote, is not?
Well, we're not just wanting to see how it is in terms of policies, thank you.
Any abstention vote, that's the way the statute reads, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, please? Yes, please.
So I just wanted to welcome back the parents and students and the faculty and staff, and I hope they have a wonderful winter break. I just would like to also ask Ms. Gilliam if she could add to the Education Committee to our agenda for the Homework Committee, if we could add that for a discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And I just want to say I'm extremely proud of our students and faculty for all their dedication. Keep up the good work. And I can't say that it surprises me because, you know, we're always doing great things in our district. On another note, it's bittersweet for some of the students and myself today. For now, the fourth year, was the chairperson for the Student EST Ad-Hoc Committee, and I would meet with these students monthly. The students were picked by the advisors and administrators, and it was an extremely diverse group. We had IB students, we had marching band students, we had football players, basketball players, you name it. We had students from the musical, we had it all. These meetings gave the students a platform to voice their opinions on how their experience is at Linden High School. When we first started our group, they had a laundry list of complaints, as well as a lot of positive feedback on what was happening at the schools. I'd like to, I would always report back to the board each month a report, and at some point, the students were asked if they would like Mrs. Torry to attend the meeting so that she could answer some of their immediate questions, you know, if they're on the spot. The students, as they came earlier, began branching out to all of their peers and asking for things that were going on in the building that they can come back and we can discuss. So it wasn't just their voices that they were, you know, coming back and talking and their concerns, it was their peers. So they would bring suggestions like the pep rallies, the dances, and they would see all their hard work come to fruition through this program. As time went on, people on the board and maybe in our central administration were a little upset about the reports that I was giving. They're a little too long, there are a lot of complaints about the cleanliness of the restrooms and some maintenance issues.
Trace, it's not reports, it's just the comments at the end.
Oh, well, I'm not a commentator.
Another thirty seconds, another thirty seconds, we're fine.
Well, no.
Yes, another thirty seconds, yes.
No, I'm going to finish my report, so the board member, I can finish my report.
These are just comments.
There is nowhere that states, there is nowhere that states that there is a time limit on board member comments.
At the end, I'm giving you time.
Right, and this is my comment. There is nowhere that states that there is a time limit, so I'm going to continue with my.
Yes, as a president, I'm giving you time.
No, I'm going to continue with my report.
I'm giving you thirty seconds, we're coming on.
You cannot give me thirty seconds, I'm going to continue with my report.
Trace, you've got thirty seconds, you're on the clock.
No. So I was asked to cut my report short, and I said, well, what child, what child do I choose during my report to like cut short? You know, who do I not include? It seems that some just didn't want to hear and some didn't want to listen. And as the new year began in January, the ad hoc committees ended on December 31st. Although, you know, it was the president's prerogative, he dissolved the ad hoc committees of the garbage committee, the homework committee, the student EST, the family EST, and I was told by Mr. Martucci it was his prerogative.
Ms. Birch, we're finished?
No, I'm not finished.
Anyone else have any comments? Anyone else have any comments?
No, at the Education Committee, I tried to bring up the committees and was told myself that him and Koshka wouldn't be doing it.
Second.
So I was no longer the chairperson of the Student EST. I was lied to because Mr. Martucci told me that I would be in charge of them. So I took this to the entire board and let them know what was happening. With only a month into the new year, the sitting board took those children in that group and dissolved them. Nobody went to them and told them that the committee was going to be dissolved and that they were no longer needed.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Some of the board members, if the children can become a part of the new committee that was being formed, they would be given an option. Well, there was a meeting held the other day, and those students were not asked to be a part of that committee.
Ms. Johnson?
So now, what's happening is the admissions of the students were told, and they're no longer allowed to continue with the Student EST.
Mrs. Viviana?
As a committee of the whole, a suggestion was made to go and tell them myself.
Yes.
Of course, I wasn't going, I was planning on doing that.
Meeting is over, thank you.
Mr. Martucci dissolved the committee, so he should have went and faced those students. This morning, I went in and sat with the students and explained the process. I would like to erase the expressions on their faces when I told them that this committee no longer existed. So my point is, you want to hurt me by taking me off all of the ad hoc committees? Do that, you can hurt me, but the one thing I won't let you do is hurt the children, because it's your prerogative. And I'm finished with this. You can hurt me all you want, I won't allow it.
I can say, I can say this about myself, I'm passionate about our students, our faculty, our staff, and our parents. Those students are now empowered to move forth as a club and continue to have a voice and purpose, and also support that club in all that they do. To any conclusion, yes, it was a bittersweet day, but I'm extremely proud of those students and look forward to hearing from them as they evolve and move forward with their passion and their vision, as well as knowing they are still valued by me. Where there's a will, there is a way. Thank you.